All right, are we ready? All right, welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission on Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, exactly 16 days before Christmas, or a little bit less than that. And we're going to start with a roll call.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
And Chair Swisher.
Here.
Okay, and Commissioner Wagstaff and Commissioner Chalmers are absent tonight. You do have a quorum.
All right, so first item is public comment on matters that are not on the agenda. Anything that people want to address that is not on the agenda either here or on Zoom?
There's nobody joining us on Zoom currently.
All right, hearing nothing. Any development, community directors reports?
Two very brief ones. Your second meeting in December, I think we've talked about, is canceled. So your next meeting will be January 13th in the new year. And then, we might have touched on this at the last meeting, but the FAR subcommittee met a few weeks ago. So currently, we're targeting a discussion item for that January meeting.
Okay.
And that's all I have for you.
Great, then we'll go right to the public hearing. First up is 295 Magnolia Avenue, APN 021101-44. Keenan Kelsey, applicant owner, Garden Downtown Zoning District, general plan designation. So this is a public hearing, a request for a design review to allow the installation of a new 532 square foot awning on the front of a commercial building. No other alterations are proposed. Can we have report?
Yeah, I've got a brief presentation for you tonight. So as you have just said, this is PLN 25-15 for 295 Magnolia Avenue. That's the building just down the street here. It is the space currently occupied by Backstage Wine Bar. And it was approved in, I believe, 2012 under a big development project that had gone on on that property to create a few mixed-use buildings. There's a residence located on the second story. And the project proposes to install a new 532 square foot awning on the front of the structure, would be just over the Backstage Wine Bar, not over the second story. And in this case, because it is an exterior modification of a commercial structure, it does require the planning commission to approve a design review entitlement. And so, as shown on the site plan here in the elevation, the highlights from the applicant are kind of hard to see on the overhead, so I apologize. But the the yellow highlight would be the area of the proposed awning, and it would cover essentially the entire front patio area. I think the easiest way to visualize it is in this photo here with the string lights that they have up currently. That's about the footprint of the proposed awning. It would go from the front of the structure to just over or behind this stone wall. It wouldn't encroach into any public right-of-way. And this structure itself is not a designated historic resource, however, it is within the downtown registered district. So it was reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Committee, who forwarded, or excuse me, Heritage Preservation Board, who reviewed it and forwarded a recommendation of approval to the planning commission. You've received no public comments on this application, so staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, take public comment, and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a Class 1 CQ exemption. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, very good. Owner, applicant, have any comments?
I don't see them here currently. I just heard the door close, they may be.
On the way up, wait a second, could be. Nope, I don't think so. All right, well, it's pretty straightforward. Why don't we just take it then to us?
You've got to do public comment.
Oh, public comment, that's right, first public comment, then us. Anybody have any comments who are in the public? Here, how about on Zoom? Oh, wait, do you? You can say anything you want, you can say, ooh, great idea. All right, anything on Zoom?
Yeah.
All right, now us.
All right. Fire it up. Okay. Yeah, I think an awning there, sounds, sounds great. I appreciate that there aren't, you know, the design choice of not having the plastic paneling around the sides like we've seen at some other structures. I think it makes for an open space that people can use outside year-round. So I, I can make the findings for the project.
I have no issues with it and can make the findings for the design review approval.
All right, now my question is, is it is not going to be in day-glow yellow, I'm assuming? Is that correct?
No, I think I put it in this draft report, but it's charcoal gray, it's similar.
Charcoal gray, so.
There's an awning on the, I guess you could call it the sister building right across the driveway, it would be the same.
And does it have the ability to put side panels on for weather purposes, or are they not?
No, it's just a strictly overhead awning. And I, you know, the last time you had an awning, the fire department had a condition that it could only be up for half the year. That's at the World Green Asylum. This one does not have a condition.
Condition on it, okay. Curious why they just?
I think it had to do with the paneling and the fabric and the kind of the fire code aspects to it all.
Okay.
And it's not, it's permanent, right? It's not removable or retractable?
Permanent, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'll look nice, I mean, it'll make it more usable. It's a nice barn. Getting downtown people to enjoy themselves downtown is our goal, so I can make the findings. So absent that, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the design review of, what do we have here? APN 021-101-44, application PLN 25-015, the awning at 295 Magnolia Avenue.
I'll second.
All right, you have a vote?
All right, Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
And Chair Swisher.
Yes.
Giving a motion passes, three guesses, zero nos, and two absences. The approval is subject to a 10-day appeal period. Interested parties can appeal the decision by filing the required fee in form with the city clerk before 5:00 PM on the 10th day.
All right. Next item, 109 Elm Avenue, APN 021-290-07, Rich Pearlstein applicant, Turner 2018 Trust owner. Public hearing, this is a request for a design review to allow the demolition of the existing residence and garage and the construction of a two, of a new two-story, 3,827 square foot, single-family residence, a 572 square foot, two-car garage, 304 square foot of ADU, accessory structures, and a new 553 square foot ADU, which is constructed within the footprint of the proposed residence. Total developed square footage would be 5,266 square feet. Also, a slope use permit to permit 520 cubic yards of cut and 362 cubic yards of fill. A total of 158 cubic yards of earthwork will be hauled off-site. And a setback variance to allow an accessory structure proposed as a trash enclosure to be constructed within the eastern side yard setback. The structure would be six feet from the, six inches from the property line at its closest point where five feet is the requirement. A heritage tree removal to allow the removal of eight heritage trees, and a fence height exception to allow a six-foot fence within the front yard setback where 42 inches is the maximum allowed height, and an eight-foot fence on the western side yard. All right, we have report.
Yes, screen here. All right, yes, so the item before you is PLN 25034 for 109 Elm. As you've just stated, it is to reconstruct the residence there. So it's, the property is located on the south side of Elm Street. It's surrounded by residences, there's a strip of technically public right-of-way, it's a staircase along the eastern property line. And then the street view for you is on the right. The property slopes away from the street and there's a lot of vegetation, so the street view, it's not exactly helpful. And the driveway that you see there is a shared driveway between 109 Elm and 111 Elm. And as the chair has just stated, the project would demolish the existing residence and construct a new 3,827 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a 572 square foot garage, a 553 square foot attached ADU, and 314 square feet of accessory structures, which requires you to approve a design review, a slope use permit, a setback variance, heritage tree removal request, and a fence height exception. And here is the site plan, outlined in red is the footprint of the existing residence. So the new residence is, I would say, in a similar location, central on the lot, obviously with a much expanded footprint. There's a new pool proposed on the eastern portion of, excuse me, the western portion of the lot. And then there are other site improvements, including a lawn area and patio areas. And here are the floor plans, this is the first floor plan, which is, contains mainly living space, the garage, a couple bathroom. And the second story here, which contains the four bedrooms and the other bathrooms. And then the last floor plan here for you is the ADU, which should be underneath the garage. And then here are the elevations, the exterior materials proposed currently are cement board siding and composition shingle roofing. And then to move on to some of the other entitlements, there's a slope use permit request because there is more than 150 cubic yards of grading. In this case, it's a total amount of grading, a total amount of grading of 882 cubic yards with 158 cubic yards being off-hauled. That's required to flatten the area for the residents and create the yard improvements in the pool. They have satisfied all the requirements of a slope use permit, including a soils report, which finds no issues with anything on site. They are requesting a heritage tree removal permit to remove eight heritage trees. A total of 25 trees are being removed, but only eight of them meet the size requirement of a heritage tree. And in this case, there's a couple distinctions between the types of trees being removed. The trees highlighted in orange here, there's four of them, those are fire-prone tree species, and the code is pretty specific that removal should be granted. And then the three highlighted blue trees are trees that are in poor condition or near the proposed improvements and should be removed. And then the fence height exception, I'm sure the commission is likely aware, fences in the front yard setback are limited to 42 inches above grade. And in the side yard setback, they're limited to six feet, or on the side property line, I should say, not in the setback, they're limited to six feet, with a caveat that there can be an extra foot of lattice should neighbors agree to it. And so in this case, the applicant is proposing a six-foot hogwire fence in the front yard, which is shown in the yellow highlight here. I'll, oops, try to zoom in here so you can kind of see it a little better. And then in the orange, that would be a six-foot solid fence with two feet of lattice on it, instead of one that's outlined in the code. And the applicant has spoken with the neighbor who is in support of that, that request. And lastly, the setback variance, this is for a trash enclosure, and it's proposed on the eastern property line. Trash enclosures are, all accessory structures are required to have a five-foot side yard setback. In this case, it would be six inches at its closest point and three feet, two inches at its furthest point from the property line. As I've noted in the staff report, staff is unable to make a hardship finding as to a reason to support granting the variance. If the planning commission supports the request, though, it should make verbal findings to support the variance and also remove condition of approval number 10, which, as worded, would require that the enclosure be repositioned to comply with the setback. There have been a couple alterations made since the packet was produced. So there's been an update to the landscaping plan based on feedback from a neighbor. So now there are seven new potocarpus trees proposed along the property line that's shared with 111 Elm, and these are to help provide screening and canopy coverage. And then there is another potential change, which is to the siding. I think I left a rendering for you up at the, the dais. And so this is based off of discussions with the applicant, depending on the project budget and impacts for, you know, aspects of the project, there's a, a potential that they would elect to go with a different siding material instead of the cement board siding, it would be a stained shingle siding. And so staff's position on the matter is that of the two, the, the cement board siding, trying to find a way to word this, is potentially the less desirable look. I think, you know, the preferred material would be the stained shingle siding. So if the planning commission is okay with the cement board siding that's being proposed tonight, staff views the shingle siding as an upgrade and would approve it as a minor modification should the project be submitted with that when they submit for a building permit. Also, as a part of your motion, you could indicate that you support the shingle siding as well.
Is there, are there fire laws regarding sting, the stained shingle versus the cement?
They would, I believe it's in the, I'll have to double-check that, but if it is, I mean, that would all be addressed through the, the building permits.
Yeah, I just read recently that there's, they're going to make a requirement that all new building construction is going to be cementous as opposed to wood, but I don't know if that applies to Larkspur or not.
Well, we can look into, it would be addressed at the building permit stage. And so you have received a total of four comments, all pretty much in support of the project. There was a comment submitted from the, the neighbor at 111 Elm, just noting prior issues with the previous owner over surface drainage and vegetation management, and both of those have been addressed in this submittal. And so lastly, staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, take public comment, and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a Class 2 CQ exemption. That concludes my report for you, and the owner and applicant are here for you if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Alex, I have a question for staff, for you. Then, so you said that the, the eight-foot fence, right, or the six-foot fence and two-foot lattice is on the west property line, right?
Yes.
Isn't, is that not, are those stairs not public right-of-way? Or is that a private?
No, they are.
Okay, I was just curious, because you said that, when you mentioned that approval had been given by the neighbor, I was just confused how that works, since there's, it doesn't seem like they actually share a border, right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it is technically city property, but in this case, it's the, just the neighbor on the.
Maybe semantics, okay. Thank you.
All right, would the owner like to talk, or architect?
Good evening, can you hear me? My name is Jared Polsky, and I'm here with Laura Van Amberg, my project architect, Brad Ixti, our landscape architect, and Nicole and Josh Turner, our clients. And I want to thank Alex for a very thorough staff report. We've been working with Nicole and Josh to create their family home, and with very few exceptions, we followed all the rules. We're allowed a 28% FAR, and we're proposing a 25% FAR. The site allows a 40% lot coverage, and we're proposing a 31% lot coverage. We are not exceeding the 30-foot height limit, we're proposing a 76% pervious, pervious site, where 37% is the minimum, and the existing site has 73% pervious. And after review by the Department of Public Works, our previous number went up slightly, we're here more pervious. I think you would agree that the massing seems pleasing and adequately varied. We're requesting three minor variations, deviations from the planning code. The only variance we're requesting is for the six-foot tall trash enclosure in the side yard. There's, this is steep site, it's pretty hard to find any other place to put a trash enclosure. And Catherine Wei, our neighbor to the east, has indicated that she has no problem with the trash enclosure as designed. We're also requiring, requesting removal of a loquat tree, which is one of the heritage trees. And you have a photo, do you have a photograph of the loquat tree?
I can, I can pull it up for them. I think it's in the plan set, but then I have.
I have one here, I can. Oh, there you go, there you go. The, the, the loquat is deemed a heritage tree because if you combine all the branches together, the total just barely exceeds the heritage definition. The arborist noted that it was in fair condition, and it's, in my opinion, hardly worth heritage tree protection. We are also requesting two fence height exceptions. The front fence is drawn as a six-foot tall fence because we're on a steep slope, and it's not going to be looming above anything because it's way down the hill. And the side yard has 24 inches of lattice over the six-foot tall fence, more than the 12-inch allowable. But the neighbor actually requested, was approved, was happy with this, wants more privacy on the, on that fence. The neighbor at 115 Elm, two houses to the east, requested a little more green, more greenery, some more sheltered planting at the east side of the site. So we contacted the fire department, and they noted they would allow some added planting on the east side of the driveway, so that's what you're seeing on the new plans, the potocarpus. And again, you know, should budget allow it, we'd like to put, Nicole and Josh would like to have a shingle siding. You can put shingles over flame block plywood, which makes the WUI guidelines, and it's just a question of money. They, the Turners have done their homework, they've met all their neighbors before and after the story polls went up, and they'd like to say a few words, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks, Jared.
I actually have a question. So to try and understand the fence in the front, your street level here, so it's down below, right? It's not at street level at six feet, it's below, okay.
The property line is not on the street, it's down below.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Jared's taking care of most of the building stuff, but we just wanted to take a moment to introduce ourselves. My name's Josh Turner, and that's my wife there, Nicole. We've been living in Corder Medera for the last 10 years. We have three kids, our oldest son is eight, our middle son is almost six, and our daughter is three. I also grew up not too far away in San Antonio, so this is pretty close to home for me. Since purchasing 109 Elm last year, we've done the best we can to extend efforts and meet neighbors and chat with neighbors and let them know of our plans, and then welcome any questions or concerns. Within the last couple of weeks, we spoke with Allison Ray Lynch at 115 Elm, Ray's here tonight, and they expressed concerns about losing some of the greenery. So as Jared mentioned, we kind of worked to nudge our driveway a little and make a little more space, so we can add some potocarpus there to try and recreate that. We've had several other good conversations with lots of other neighbors, and they're all in support, and we're not aware of any other concerns. Really excited to move to Larkspur. We're going to consider this our forever home. And so thank you so much for taking the time to review and consider our application, and happy to answer any questions.
It's a quick question about the, the planning. I'm, I'm looking at the, your first, the first page of the thing. So in the, the plants along the, the concrete little wall in the front, that's cool with the fire department, they're okay with all that? Brad? Yeah. Good, that's great. Thank you. All right. Public comments?
Very brief one, commissioners. My name is Raymond Lynch, and I live at 115 Elm Avenue. Lived there since 1994, so it's a long time, and we've seen a lot of changes. My wife and I reviewed the plans about a week and a half ago and took a look at it, spoke with Mr. Turner as well, and realized that we were going to be overlooking a very long and wide driveway, and expressed concerns about the changes with the removal of all the trees and all the greenweed that's going to be there, and what we'd be overlooking, and felt it had an effect on our privacy and the general character. We expressed these concerns to the Turners, and they've undertaken to work with us, and as Mr. Turner just referred to, are going to try to put up some screening along the driveway, seven trees, as I understand it, we'll get this right, potocarpus grossiliars. Understand that they're going to undertake to get eight to 12-foot trees, that would be the height upon planting. We would very much urge that they be 12-foot trees along there because it does make a substantial change to our property. We've met and conferred with them over the last week and a half, and we're very pleased that they undertook to accommodate us and to try to alleviate those issues. So based on that, and I know that our neighbor right next door to us also was concerned, but based on that accommodation, assuming that goes through and it's accepted, we don't have an objection. Thank you very much for allowing me to comment.
Thanks very much. Do you like the general design of the house?
Yes, I think I like the general design of the house. But I'm going to be looking at it directly.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
That's good. Right, right.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, did you have anything that you want to add?
I'm supposed to here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. And the potocarpus, are you going to put them in at what?
I'd ask that you, sorry to interrupt, could you go to the mic so we can?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Brad Ixti, Imprintz Landscape Architecture. Yeah, we were working with the fire department this last week and, and changed the driveway a little bit and added these seven potocarpus trees. And we can get them, yeah, we can get them at 12 feet, 10 to 12 feet, you know, depending on what time of year we get them, but yeah, we can totally accommodate the neighbor.
And how tall do they grow? I mean, I understand the.
Well, there's, it depends on pruning, but they can get 20 feet tall. That's about as big as I've seen the columnar variety grow, and you don't want them to get much taller than that.
Right. They just. Just curious, do they get leggy at the bottom if you don't prune them, or do they?
Yeah, yeah, they'll turn into more like a standard-style tree where the trunk will be bare and you'll get a canopy head on them, where we'd like to keep them growing to the ground and more like a shrub form, like a tall columnar shrub form.
Right, which would seem to accomplish what you want to accomplish, which is screening, kind of.
Yeah, we'll accomplish screening for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, I have a question, I think, for, for Jared. It's about the, about the trash enclosure. So I know you mentioned that there's, it's, it's a sloping site and there's not much space. Is there, is there anywhere else to put it? I mean, it, it just seems like, you know, I don't know, I don't know how you guys feel about the setback, but it seems like if there is another place to put it, then that would be preferable, right? So we can sort of keep everything consistent with the rules.
We couldn't find a reasonable flat area for, for the, so we went and talked to the neighbor, and she's absolutely fine with this. So it seemed like she's okay with it, that this is the one flat site that's sort of hidden, it makes most, more sense to put it there out of the, out of view than have it up on the driveway, the steep driveway in view, so.
And, and it's, the, the, the structure itself is about six feet tall, right? And there's a six-foot fence right behind it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, wait, I have one more.
Okay.
About the, about the, the eight-foot fence. So I, I guess I'm still confused about that, so it seems like it doesn't, since it borders public right-of-way, I mean, I guess it's just a decision for us, right, how we feel about it, because you guys talked to the neighbor, I understand.
The neighbor to the west would, would appreciate a little taller fence, a little more privacy.
Can, can they see over both fences? Because there's sort of, you know, a 10-foot gap between the, the two fences.
I haven't been on their property, I'm not sure.
Maybe, yeah, sure.
The, the existing fence along the stairway is currently six foot with two feet of lattice for most of the way, and there's even a section that's currently four feet of lattice, so it's about 10 feet. But it needs to be replaced, it's like, kind of falling over, it's leaning on one of the, one of the trees. And the neighbor on the west likes more screening, but as you're walking down the stairs, depending where you're standing, you're a lot higher than even the eight-foot fence. So if you walk down the public stairway on some of those level platforms, even the eight-foot fence, you're still looking right over, and then you walk down and you're below it, and then you're, you're about, so it's a little bit of that going on. But the existing fence is already eight to 10 feet that we'd be replacing.
Okay, so it's replacing in kind, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other comments, public, on, or on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you want to comment, you can raise your hand. No hands on Zoom.
All right, excellent, well, let's bring it back. I'll let you go first.
I think it's a beautiful design, was very happy that we didn't have to do an FAR exception. I think that's my first project since I've been on planning commission, we haven't had enough FAR exception. So I appreciate that, Mr. Polsky. You clearly know how to do what you do. I think that, for me, the, you know, I mean, as Mr. Polsky pointed out, they're, they're at 25%, they're, you know, I mean, they've met so many of the big things that we always get variances for. I was really pleased with the design and saw pictures of what, you know, I didn't go and look at the house, I didn't have time, but I looked at, there's a really great website of, it was when it was for sale, I guess, that I was checking out, and I was like, yeah, no, this is, this is going to be a big, big improvement. So I, I can make the findings for the design review, the slope use permit, the heritage tree removal, and the fence height exception. The setback variance for the trash structure, I'd go either way on that, but I would lean towards approving it because if it's not granted, they're still going to put their trash there, right? So they might as well have an enclosure, so that's where I'm at.
Hey.
All right. So yeah, I, looking at the, just the design review part of it, I, I, I like the look of it. I mean, it's, it's a large house, but it's a large lot, and it's, you know, meets the floor area requirements. You know, I think the, the design sort of matches with some of the. the, the design sort of matches with some of the other houses up there, so, um, I can make the findings for design review. For a slope use permit, um, I don't have a problem with that. You guys have a soils report and a, and a, an engineer on, on the design team, so, uh, I don't have an issue with that. I'll skip down to the heritage tree removal. Um, I think I can also make the findings for the heritage tree removal. So most of them, I think, were, were fire-prone and would need to be removed anyway, and the remaining trees were either in poor condition. I think the one was the loquat tree, which, you know, looking at the photo, um, and we've had some, yeah, yeah. I, I think I can make the findings for removal of the, the loquat tree. We've had, we've also had some discussions here about like types of tree and others' feelings on.
I definitely equate it with that damn grapefruit tree.
The fence height exception, you know, I was a little bit hesitant about, um, the fence height exceptions at first, but after learning that the one along the public right-of-way, the stairs, is replacing in kind what's there right now. It seems like that is, uh, that would be acceptable to me. And then the, along the front side, um, you know, I think I've made my, my opinions clear about front fences, sort of creating a walled-off corridor, right? But in this case, it is, uh, I guess it's down the hill from, from the street, so it's unlike some of the other ones that we've, that we've seen. So I think I can make the findings for that, too. The, 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 the trash enclosure, the setback, um, I'm, I, I understand you guys have looked for another place to put it. I, it's, it seems like it's a, it's a, it's a pretty large lot. I feel like there's got to be another place to put it, uh, but, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not an architect. Maybe while, uh, while Jeff gives, gives his thoughts, I, I, what I'm looking at is the findings, right? Because we have to make specific findings for, um, to, in order to approve a variance, and so, uh, I'm going to read those carefully while Jeff gives his opinions.
So, um, I think it's a really nice design. Um, Jared, you've really done a beautiful job. And I know Brad's work, and he does tremendous landscaping work, and I think it's going to be nice. I mean, you're going to lose your loquats, which is a nice kind of fruit. I mean, I don't know if you had a loquat jam, but it's really good, but that's okay. I'm okay with that. So I can make the findings. Um, I don't have a problem with the trash enclosure. I think it's a six-foot tall accessory structure that is on the fence height. It's not going to, uh, project above it, and it'll make it a lot easier for you to keep your trash away from raccoons and other nasty little creatures that try to get in there. Um, size of the house is great. Uh, you know, I raised two boys and a girl in a house about this size, and it's a really nice thing to have a house like this to raise them in. The only thing I can tell you is when they all leave, it's kind of big, so it's a little sad when they're all gone. Yeah, I know. Yeah, well, but it's true. Um, so, um, I can make the findings and, uh, and the exceptions, so. Okay, go ahead.
You're making me read really fast here.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess I, I would be okay with it, it, as long as, I don't know, Alex, is there a way that we can, uh, what, I guess what I'm worried about is, you know, so we approve a setback, or a setback variance right now for a six-foot trash structure where a six-foot fence is, is allowed. And, and that seems okay to me, but it seems like there's a potential for in the future, uh, oh, we want to put a roof on it. I'm not saying you guys would do that, but, you know, somebody in the future, uh, comes and does that. I, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can avoid that situation of, well, we had a setback variance and we're, we're, uh, you know, just replacing what's there, but now it's fifteen feet tall, right? A different house in the future, or something like that.
Well, certainly any, like, height increase or changes to it would trigger some level of, of review.
Building inspector would find out.
Yeah, I, I think if you're worried about setting precedent for other projects, that's where you kind of want to be specific in your wording as to, okay, well, it's unroofed. It's the same height as a fence, if that's the rationale that you're, you're using. So that's where I would, I would be specific in your, in your motion as to, or any discussion as to why you feel in this case it's acceptable. And just with the, yeah, I, I think planning would flag a project like this where it says, we're going to put a shed roof on the structure now, and it's got a fifteen-foot roof on it. There would be more discussion about, about that certainly.
Okay, well, I'm, I guess I'm noting in our discussion that, uh, um, you know, I think it's acceptable because it's the same height as.
Go ahead and make a motion.
The adjacent, no, I'm just putting it in the.
I'm saying, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And is there other things that we need to discuss? Like, do we need to, to give you findings for that?
I, I think we've, I've heard your discussion, and that's.
Okay, that's sufficient.
I just, as a part of any motion that you make, you would also want to, it sounds like, remove condition of approval number ten.
Remove condition of approval ten. Oh, God, where are the conditions? Okay. Then I guess we're ready to make, are you guys ready to make?
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion.
All right. I move to approve project PLN twenty-five dash zero three four for design review, slope use permit, setback variance for a six-foot structure within the side yard setback, heritage tree removal, and a fence height exception. Does that satisfy our discussion?
You say, yeah, you said condition.
Uh, with, uh, removal of condition of approval ten.
All right. We have a roll.
I second.
Right.
Oh, thank you, we second, yeah.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
AV project is approved, uh, three yeses, zero nos, and two absences. Interested parties can appeal decision by filing the required form and fee within ten days to the city clerk. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations.
All right. Right. So now we need to approve the minutes from prior meetings. We have, um, here, here are the conditions. You saw those, right? From the west one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Which minutes do we have to approve here?
Uh, the last one, October twenty-eighth.
All right. So we need to approve the October twenty-eighth minutes. Does anybody, any comments on those?
I would move to approve them.
I'll second.
All right. Uh, yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
And Chair Swisher?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't have the agenda on me. What's next? Reports? Oh, yeah, planning commission reports. Do we have any planning commission reports? Any, any, no?
I don't think so. I mean, we, I guess the subcommittee, FAR subcommittee, we met with, uh, we met a few weeks ago, and I think I owe Alex, uh, a revised spreadsheet, but we'll be discussing that, so look forward to getting this issue hopefully resolved.
Great. All right, the next motion is, I mean, next, uh, agenda item is adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, acclamation. Aye.
Aye.
Good. Thanks, everybody.